Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board. Today is Monday, January 11th at 7:37 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given. That is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting is also can also be viewed via WebEx with a link found on Parsippany's website, www.parsippany.net. We are going to start off with some correspondence. Mentioned that Ms. Mealy is not participating tonight and we did receive a resignation letter from Mr. Aperelik. I do have a letter from Mayor Soriano dated January 4th, 2021. Appointing Anil Dadeich as alternate number two of the planning board for a term ending December 31st, 2022. And we are also appointing Councilman DePiero as a Class III member of the planning board for a term ending December 31st, 2021. At this point, Scott Carlson, the board attorney, will swear amen.
Thank you, Nora. Councilman DePiero, are you are you here with us? We'll do yours first. If you could unmute.
I'm on unmute.
Okay, Councilman, good to see you. Repeat after me, please.
You're you're coming in very. Let me turn my volume up.
A little closer, is that better?
That's much better.
Okay. Repeat after me.
I have a copy of the oath. I have a copy of the oath, why don't I just read it?
Go ahead.
"I, Michael DePiero, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I do further solemnly swear that I will impartially and justly perform all the duties of the office of Planning Board Member Class III, Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, according to the best of my ability, so help me God."
Congratulations, Councilman. Okay, is Mr. Dadeich here?
Yep, I'm here, yep. Yeah, so I have the copy, I can read as well.
Okay, very good, then just read that.
"I, Anil Dadeich, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I do further solemnly swear that I will impartially and justly perform all the duties of the office of Planning Board Member, Alternative Number Two, Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, according to the best of my ability, so help me God."
Congratulations.
At this point, I'm going to open the floor for nominations for chairman.
Nora?
Yes.
Nora, I move to nominate John Von Aken as chairman of the planning board.
Nora, I second Tom Dinsmore.
Are there any other nominations? At this point, I would like a motion to close nominations.
I make that motion, close nominations.
Who's, I'm sorry, who said that?
Mandel.
Second.
Dinsmore's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, at this point, I need a motion for John Von Aken as chairman.
You got the motion, you need.
Yeah, I think we just need the vote on the on the motion on the floor.
Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Chairman takes over.
Okay, Nora, thank you very much. At this time, I will call for nominations for the vice chairman.
Chairman, I would like to nominate Tom Dinsmore for vice chair.
I have a second. All right, seconded. Do we have any other nominations for vice chairman? All right, hearing none, motion to close the nominations.
So moved, Mandel.
Second for Jerry.
Very good. All in favor to close the nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Very good.
All right, let's take a vote on Tom Dinsmore for vice chairman of the planning board of adjustments. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dadeich?
Yep.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mandel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken?
Yes. All right, welcome aboard, Tom, good to have you back.
Thank you very much.
All right, at this moment, we need to reaffirm the appointment of our board secretary and for that role, I nominate Nora Julie.
And I second.
Second.
Very good. Nora, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dadeich?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mandel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken?
Yes. Now, we also have the appointment for the chairman of the Minor Site Plan Committee. And for that position, I nominate Tom Dinsmore. I don't believe we need a second for that or a vote. Tom, do you accept the position?
I will gladly accept, I thank you for your confidence.
As always, you always have my full confidence, all right. And Tom, if there's any adjustments to the committee that you would like for this year, please feel free to reach out to me and we'll get that proposed for the next meeting.
Great.
Okay. Now, we have a motion for contracts. Do we have any contracts that we are needed for this this year? Nora?
I think you just need to, all these positions are one-year positions, so the people listed there, myself included, need to be reappointed for the year 2021.
Okay.
You could do them as a block if you'd like, or you can do them individually. If no members want to take any off, you could do them as a block.
Okay, and do we need to do a roll call on these?
Can hurt.
Okay, good, so with that in mind, I would like to present reapportment of the planning board professionals. That would be Susan Favate, a planner from BFJ Planning, Andrew Cagiano, engineer from Keller Kirkpatrick, and Scott Carlson, attorney from Carlson Seedsmen.
So moved.
Very good, do we have a second?
Second, really.
All right, and Nora, would you please call the roll?
Before I call the roll, it is no longer Keller and Kirkpatrick, it is GPI. That was my error for not making that correction.
Thank you, I think I had seen that somewhere.
Mr. Dadeich?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez? Mr. Mandel?
Yes.
Gotcha, Mr. Mandel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken?
Yes. Okay, with that, our reorganization meeting is set to be adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, reorganization meeting is adjourned and we will move on to our regularly scheduled program. Okay. Welcome aboard, everybody, and now to start.
Before you before you get that, do I have to sign this swearing affidavit and get it into Nora? Do you need that?
I have a nicer copy, I'll have you sign that and return it.
Okay.
Scott, is there any problem with the signature not being present?
No, we can do that anytime in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, very good, then we'll move forward with our regular agenda. So with that said, welcome to the planning board meeting for January 11th, 2021. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Public Open Meetings Act. This meeting can also be accessed through WebEx through a link provided at the town's website on parsippany.net. Nora, would you please call the roll for attendance?
Mr. Dadeich?
Yes.
Councilman DePiero?
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Here.
Mr. Fergieri?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Mandel?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Chairman Von Aken?
Here.
Okay. This moment, please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two resolutions that have been shared for approval at this time. The first resolution being for Dominic Barone of 1160 South Beverick Road, block 757 lot 54, minor subdivision with C variance. I'll accept the motion on this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, this is a record that I've got minor corrections, they're all they're all essentially typos that need not be discussed, but I will make those in the morning.
Scott, we're having trouble hearing you.
Scott mentioned that he does have a few adjustments to make to that resolution. The adjustments appear to be typos which do not require discussion, and so we can continue with the resolutions, approval of these resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy again.
Yes, Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve the resolution for Dominic Barone, minor subdivision with C variance, application 19:508.
All right, do we have a second?
Second, Dinsmore.
Very good, Nora, would you please call the roll?
Councilman DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mandel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken?
Yes. All right, very good, and the second resolution we have is application 20:521. I'll accept a I'll accept a, I'm losing my mind today, I'm sorry. Do we have anybody to? I'm sorry, I'm.
Make a motion.
I'm I'll make a motion to accept application 20:521 MCC Blue 400 Interface Parkway, block 136, lots 43.05, amended preliminary and final major site plan.
Very good, do we have a second for that motion?
Second for Jerry.
Second for Jerry.
Very good, Nora, please call the roll.
Councilman DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mandel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken?
Yes.
Okay, very good, moving on to our agenda items for today. I just wanted to preface before we get into the agenda because this item, as have other agenda items before, looks to be a rather lengthy one. And so what I wanted to do is before we got started, lay out some ground rules and some some expectations as far as how we'll move forward. With that said, what we'll what we'll do in this case is in terms of process, we'll go ahead and allow the applicant to present their witnesses. When the when the attorney for the applicant has completed their questions, we'll open it up for questions from the board. We'll continue in that way through all the witnesses until the applicant has completed all the testimony that they would like to provide, in which case we will open up the public portion for questions, where the the members of the public can ask questions of any of the witnesses that have been presented to that time. After we are going to ask that no one person ask more than two questions, you'll be permitted to ask additional questions if you go to the back of the line and allow other other members of the town to ask questions at that point. Once the questioning portion, the public questioning has concluded, we'll move on to public commentary. This is where, when you don't have a direct question, but you have a feeling or or something else you want to make the the planning board aware of about the project in general, you're permitted to say so at that point. Those comments will be kept to a time period of three minutes. So please keep, please work on what you would like to say in advance, we'll try to be lenient to the extent that's possible, because we certainly want to give everybody a chance to say what's on their mind, but we do have to be respectful of of people's time tonight as well. The last thing I would let's see, I would like to add is due to the time that that this testimony is likely to take, what we typically have done in the past is any any witness or portion of the meeting which is started before 10:00 will be completed. Any any activity which has not been completed by 10 o'clock, we will postpone until a future date. Do we have a representative from RRT to Campus LLC?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do you have any objections to us wrapping up with the last last testimony starting before 10:00?
Of course not.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Just one more second, please. Yeah, and so just to let members know, it is likely, although not certain, that we may not get to the questioning portion tonight, and so I just wanted to give you a heads up in advance that, you know, we hope that you will write your questions down and prepare them, we may get to it tonight, it may be postponed until the next meeting. We certainly want to hear from you, so please make sure that if you do have questions or or comments prepared, that you are able to join us at the next meeting time. But with that said, we'll try to move through this efficiently so we don't have to worry about a second date, all right, and with that said, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steven Tom Belakian from the law firm Reno Law Group of Parsippany, on behalf of the applicant, RRT2 Campus LLC. First off, congratulations on a successful organization and best wishes to the board for a very productive 2021. Tonight's application is for preliminary and final major site plan approval for a new apartment building, 172 unit apartment building located on Campus Drive, close to the intersection with Littleton Road. It's on the MacCalla Business Campus. The property was recently rezoned by the town and this board to into the AHD-3A zone. So what the board is going to be hearing tonight with respect to what's proposed for the two campus property should seem very familiar to the board. The board's planner, the board itself was involved, had a lot of input and involvement with the preparation of zoning for this property. So again, what is being proposed is fairly conforming, there is some slight variances, some slight deviations, given the actual field conditions that were that were discovered during design, but we'll we'll get into all of that during the presentation of our experts. And with that, on that note, we have four expert witnesses to present this evening, and in the order I'll introduce them is Patricia Ruskin, professional engineer, who's our civil engineer, Patty designed the site plan, we have Tom Carmen of Millila Borough and Carmen, who is the landscape architect, who will be talking about all the amenities and features that are being proposed for this new building. Following Tom is Chris Lazard, the architect, who designed the building, and he'll be talking about all the features and amenities and all that good stuff. And last but not least is Paraguay of Dynamic Traffic, who's going to provide the board a traffic analysis over the study that was submitted to the board. In addition to those four experts, participating this evening will be Thomas Golden, who is a vice president of development from MacCalla, and taking all this down with his fast fingers is Eric Fishman, the court reporter, who is again preparing the preparing the verbatim record of tonight's presentation. So that that said, I'd like to have the four expert witnesses and one of the owner applicant, Tom Golden, sworn in. If I could do that in maths, that would be great.
Scott, any objections to doing them all together? That's not our normal process.
He seems to have fallen off my screen, is he there?
I do see him on the on the participants list. Scott, are you with us? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, would you like me to go through the waivers?
That sounds like an excellent way to go about the the wait.
Great.
So Susan, please go ahead.
Sure, just going through the checklist items. There's one one item that we, I'm hoping that Mr. Tom Belakian or his witness address is confirming whether or not this application requires Morris County Planning Board approval, and if so, an update on the status of that approval. Otherwise, we had raised some questions about, you know, clarification about easements, which hopefully will be addressed in testimony. We had recommended waivers on the conditions of final major site plan, which this board is used to seeing by now, when you have an application that's combined preliminary and final. That's it.
So Susan, I do not believe a county application has been filed because the the development part of the property does not front on a county road, Campus Drive is not a county road, Littleton Road is a is a, technically that's a federal highway, so that has not been sought. And I believe our engineers can talk about the easements and those types of issues when during their testimony. Susan, did I miss anything from what your request was?
Nope, you got it.
Okay, also, once Scott rejoins, with respect to the few variances, Tom Golden, who is also a licensed professional planner, so we'll be swearing him in as both the applicant owner and expert, too, so he can give a proof as to those few release.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. The the comments regarding the the designation of Littleton Road, I'm a little concerned because I've always known that to be a county road, do we have somebody who's able to verify that one way or the other?
I was under the impression that Route 202 was a county road.
Okay, well, the applicant should know that any decision from this board does require that all these other items be satisfied, so even if you were to receive a an approval from this board to go forward, that would still be subject to the county planning board's approval if such jurisdiction was established.
Okay, and that's fine, and to the extent Littleton is a county, we will make application to the Morris County Planning Board, so that's not a problem.
Okay, very good. All right, Scott, have you been able to rejoin us? I don't see him at all right now, all right. I am able to swear in the.
Chairman? Chairman?
Yes, Judy.
Scott got booted off, so he needs to have the link again. I'm going to try to send him the link. Okay.
Judy, we're sending him the link, you can't you can't send the others.
Yeah. Okay, very good, while we take care of that, I can go ahead and swear the witnesses in. Let's see. Forgive me, this isn't my normal practice. I believe we have Tom Golden, Patricia, Tom and Chris, who were mentioned by by the applicant's attorney, Steven, with their engineering landscaping, architect, traffic and and planning credentials identified. Let's see if I can remember Scott's verbiage. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to be to give is truthful?
I do.
I do.
Do.
Okay. Very good, and Steven, who is your first witness?
First first witness is Patty Ruskin.
Patty? Good evening.
All right, Patty, would you please give the board the benefit of your credentials?
Certainly, good evening, everybody, happy new year. My name is Patricia Ruskin, R U S K A N. I am a principal with the firm of Paula Sokolowski and Sartor, located at 3 Mountain View Road in Warren, New Jersey. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have appeared before numerous boards throughout the state in my 25-plus year career, both zoning and planning board throughout the state on various development projects.
Patty, you were most recently before this board about two years ago, for I believe the Beer Garden down the street at 7 Sylvan 8 Campus?
No, I actually was not on the on the Beer Garden, I did appear before the board on numerous other projects and also in front of the zoning board, most recently on the Dryden Way Restaurant Project.
With those qualifications, we would ask that Ms. Ruskin be deemed an expert in civil engineering?
Do any of the members of the board have any questions or concerns about the qualifications of Ms. Ruskin as an engineer? All right, hearing none, this witness is acceptable, please continue with your with your testimony.
Great, thank you very much. Just in order to coordinate things, Tom Carmen, who's our landscape architect, is going to be presenting the exhibits, so while Patty is testifying, Tom can focus on, he's going to be putting up an exhibit package, like a share screen type thing, so so Tom is ready to do that. So Patty, you designed the project, can you give the board an overview of the property and then get into your design of that property and what it encompasses?
Certainly.
Can you hold up for just a second, I want to make sure that Mr. Carmen gets promoted appropriately so the screen sharing can take place?
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we're ready to go, please continue.
Okay, so if you can go to the first slide, I assume we will call this Exhibit A1. This is an overall aerial of the site as a whole, this is a larger scale aerial, it shows the site in red, the with. The, uh, with north being approximately at 11 o'clock on this exhibit. The project site encompasses three lots. It's Lot 3.1, which is also known as 1633 Littleton Road. Lot 3.20, which is the two campus lot. That's the, the image that you see here highlighted in red. It is Lot 3.2, which is also known as Four Campus Drive. It's situated in the western portion of the MacCalli Business Campus and the southwestern portion of Percipony Troy Hills Township. Littleton Road or Route 202 is to the far west of the project site with office development to the north and to the east and Campus Drive to the south. Now Campus Drive is the center roadway in the western portion of the MacCalli Business Campus. It connects Littleton Road to Dryden Way on the eastern side.
Ms. Ruskin, Ms. Ruskin, I'm sorry. Um, Chairman, this is Scott Carlson. I just want to make sure that, uh, you can hear me, number one, and number two, that the witnesses were sworn in while I was trying to log back in.
Uh, we, we did my version of the swearing, which was, uh, to ask them if the testimony we were providing was to be truthful. Um, I, I hope that was within the guidance of your normal practice.
Mr. Tom Blockin, was it suitable?
It was suitable, Scott.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I was unceremoniously booted and it took me a couple of minutes to get back in. Continue. Sorry.
No problem. And, and so also for your notes, what we have presented in front of us is a PowerPoint deck. Uh, it appears to be 18 slides long and we've identified that as, uh, as, uh, A1 for your-
Gotcha. And, and while I'm here, um, we did have one other preliminary matter involving, uh, board member Hernandez. Has that been addressed?
Not yet.
All right. May I, may I do that now? And again, Ms. Ruskin, sorry for interrupting your flow here.
No worries.
But, uh, Ms., uh, board member Hernandez, um, contacted me earlier. Um, and we went over some, uh, prior activities she had with regard to the subject site here and the surrounding properties. She's a, she's a neighbor, although not within 200 feet. And, uh, you know, she's had, um, both conversations and gone in writing, um, with some opinions about what should be done with these properties. And given that and given the depth of it and the recentness of it, this is prior to her being a planning board member, but just, uh, uh, you know, a couple of years ago. I, I'd advise her that I thought it would be best if she sat this application out and recused. Mrs. Hernandez, do you agree?
I'm trying to unmute myself. Um, I would, I think so, and, um, but it's the, you know, I'm asking, um, counsel and, and the chair, Chairman as well.
Yeah. I mean, you know, my advice, you know, and I'm always fairly conservative about this. My advice is always, you know, if you need to ask the question, you probably want to do the, the, the best course of action, probably just sit it out. Um. Chairman, do you have any, any objection?
Uh, I have no objection. We have a forum without you, Ms. Hernandez. If, uh, you have any concerns, um, you're, you're certainly within your rights to, uh, this out. And you're more than welcome to listen as a member of the general public.
I'd like to listen. I apologize. It's just, it was a, it was a pretty significant, um, conversation we had a few years back. So I, I would feel kind of, um, awkward sitting in on, at, at the board and if, and if we're not approving, thank you.
Understood. And, and we want to make sure that we do it fair for the applicant in this case or any case. So, um, I think we're all set to move forward. Ms. Hernandez, your excuse for, uh, for this application.
Application.
Thank you. I can listen.
I'm sure.
I'm, I'm sorry, Scott. I didn't hear what you said.
No objection to Ms. Hernandez's stepping down.
No objection.
All right. I think I'm done. I'm going to shut up now.
Okay. And we'll return back to Ms. Ruskin.
Okay. So we were looking at Slide 1 of Exhibit A1. So, Mr. Carmen, if you can go to Slide 2. Slide 2 is just a blow up of that aerial image so that you can see the existing site and the surrounding areas a little bit easier. This is a 60 scale plan. Again, uh, uh, north is about 11 o'clock, um, on this exhibit. Again, the project site of Two Campus Drive, which is the uh, area that is outlined in the heavy red is of just a little bit over five acres in size. It's 5.04 acres. It has frontage on Campus Drive. So you can see that on the site today, there is an existing office building. It's, is three stories and it has, uh, surface parking at the rear of the site or the north side of the site to support that existing office development. To the west or to the left of this uh, outlined to Campus Drive is 1633 Littleton Road. That is also an office development with some supporting, um, surface parking. And then to the immediate east is outlined in dashed, is a portion of what we call Four Campus Drive. So this makes up the entire project site, although the majority and of the development is going to be on the Two Campus Lot itself. Access to the site today is via two driveways. There are two full movement driveways. The western driveway is a shared driveway with 1633 Littleton Road and a separate eastern driveway to the site. There is an existing above ground detention basin on the south side of the site that is connected to an upstream detention basin to the west on 1633 campus and also connected to the downstream basin located on Four Campus Drive. They are connected via storm sewer piping. Now this system is also known as, or had been known as the ribbon ponds that were essential to the stormwater management for the campus as a whole. So they're, they're all interconnected and ultimately drain to the eastern wetlands area on the east side of Dryden Way. The existing office building on Two Campus Drive and the surface parking area will be demolished in order to allow for the construction of the proposed development. Also, the, uh, building on 1633 Littleton Road and the majority of the parking area on that site, as well as the tennis court on 1633 Littleton Tract will also be removed. There'll be some incidental improvement on both the 1633 Littleton Tract as well as the Four Campus Tract in order to, uh, develop this project as a whole. And we'll talk about that uh, in a little bit more detail shortly. If you can go to Slide 3 of Exhibit A1. This is the existing condition site plan that is in the set of plans that was submitted. We've added some color. This color depicts the existing easements on the site and on 1633 Littleton, as well as on Four Campus. The light colored blue on this exhibit, which is on the southern side of 1633 Littleton, as well as on the Four Campus Tract, tho- those are storm easements or stormwater easements, drainage easements. Uh, with the area that you see in the darker blue color is a shared access and utility easement. Now that's the shared driveway between 1633 and Two Campus. And the area that shaded in a pink color on the north side of 1633 Littleton is an existing utility easement, sanitary sewer easement. And lastly, the area shaded in a orangey pink color is an existing parking easement to allow parking from 1633 Littleton on the Two Campus Tract. For the most part, the, uh, easements will remain or will be modified and reconfigured as part of the proposed project. The, any easement agreements will be modified or amended as necessary as well. Looking at this particular existing conditions plan, you can see the topography of the site as well. The site is generally flat, although it does drain from north to south uh, towards the, um, detention basin on the south side. The area from the existing curb on the eastern driveway to and towards Four Campus drains in that direction as well. The topography, uh, there's a, a slope from the Two Campus portion of the site to the parking area on, on Four Campus. Stormwater runoff that's generated on the site today is collected via storm sewer systems and ultimately discharging into the detention basin on the south side of the site. Additionally, the majority of 1633 Littleton actually drains through storm sewer systems and into the same detention basin on the Two Campus Tract. There were two, uh, two small areas or pockets, as we call them, of wetlands that were identified within the existing detention basin on the Two Campus Tract near the low points of the basin. They've, um, been, over time, created to, um, at these particular low point areas. Now, if we move to Slide number four of Exhibit A1, this is the existing site plan that was part of the set. We've added color to that and we've removed some of the text to make it easier to present on this exhibit. As you heard from our attorney, the applicant is proposing to construct a a residential building, an apartment building with 172 residential units and various amenities. The, the existing three-story office building, as well as the associated surface parking, will be removed in order to accommodate this. Surface parking for the proposed project is in the form of a parking lot or parking areas surrounding the building. A total of 288 parking stalls are proposed on the Two Campus Tract with 45 parking spaces proposed on the western side of the Four Campus Tract for a total of 333 parking spaces. The 45 parking spaces on the Four Campus lot will be located within a reciprocal easement to benefit the Two Campus residential development. Additionally, on the eastern side of the Two Campus Lot, there is a proposed shared parking reciprocal easement as well for 45 spaces on, from the, measured from the northeasternmost portion of the eastern parking area, um, and 45 stalls to the south. Parking meets RSIS, uh, Residential Site Improvement Standards for Parking for this apartment complex. 330 spaces are required per RSIS and 333 are provided. This includes both, both visitor and ADA parking. All the parking spaces, the standard spaces will be nine feet wide and 18 feet long in accordance with the Residential Site Improvement Standards. Now, access to the site will be via the two existing driveways. The western driveway will continue to be a shared driveway with 1633 Littleton Road and the eastern driveway. Sidewalk is proposed around the entire building area. You can see that on this exhibit in the yellow color. Uh, we have, um, also access to the building, you can see via the sidewalk areas from the per- the perimeter sidewalk towards the building. The sidewalk is, we've only provided on the interior portion of the development. We are consider, while we are considering this a parking lot, we do understand that GPI, uh, may have interpreted this as a roadway that serves the development. And if that is the case, and if the planning board agrees that this is a roadway and not a parking area, then we are requesting a de minimis exception from RSIS because if it is considered a roadway, sidewalks are considered, uh, required on both sides of a roadway in accordance with RSIS. While it's not currently shown on the plan, the applicant is also proposing the sidewalk from the western side of the parking, southern parking area, which is near the front entry, along the eastern side of the western driveway out to Campus Drive where there is an existing bus stop. So that, uh, that proposed sidewalk connection will also be added as part of this project. There are two sidewalk connectors that connect the shared parking on Four Campus Drive. You can see them on the eastern side of the parking area. Due to the existing topography, when, remember I did tell you that it does slope, uh, there is a slope from the property line or along the eastern side of Two Campus down to Four Campus parking area. Due to that topography, there are proposed stairs and handrails to allow access from that shared parking area on the Four Campus Tract. Now the, the lobby for the development, and the architect will explain this in greater detail, but the lobby is located on the southwestern side of the building. And the service area for the, for the building is located on the northeastern side of the building. You, you can see that there is a service area or a loading area hatched out in that, uh, that would be striped out at, at the surface grade or surface parking area to accommodate the, uh, service vehicles as well as any garbage refuse vehicles that would come to the site. The loading area is 12 feet wide, wide by 34 feet long. And it's been provided to accommodate an, an SU 30 or a single unit with 30 feet long in that particular space. There are amenity courtyards you can see in the, in between the wings of the building that are proposed for this residential development, which, um, our landscape architect and architect will talk about as we move along. The building itself is a proposed to cover 22.7% of the tract. This does meet your ordinance requirements or allowances for permissible building coverage per zoning, which is 30% coverage. However, the impervious coverage proposed for the site is proposed to be 72.7%, where 70% is permitted per the ordinance. And therefore we are requesting a variance or impervious coverage. You heard to talk about the service area on the northeast side of the building. That is the service area also for the trash and recycling pickup. There is a trash room within the building and on service on the days that, uh, for pickup, this trash and recycling will be brought out to the curb for pickup. In, but, uh, normal days it is stored within the building itself. And the trash and recycling will be picked up by a private hauler hired by the management company managing the building. There is a proposed project identification sign or monument sign that is proposed to be located at the western side of the eastern driveway. Now this sign is in conformance with your ordinance. It's supposed to be six feet high. Uh, excuse me, six feet wide and seven and a half feet high with a sign area of 24 square feet. It's double sided so that the text can be seen from the motoring public, either, either driving east or west on Campus Drive. The existing detention basin that is located on the southern portion of the tract along Campus Drive will be modified to accommodate the proposed developments. And with that, we'll talk about the grading and drainage. If you can turn to Slide number five, please. So this is the grading plan that's in, in the set of plans that was submitted as part of the site plan application. This is Sheet C6. As you can see, uh, the majority of the site will be disturbed as part of this project. The goals for grading and drainage for the site in, include minimizing the amount of earthwork required, meaning cuts and fills, minimizing the number of and heights of retaining walls and/or steps that, that will, would be needed for the project, providing positive drainage throughout the site and meeting the townships, the New Jersey DEP and the RSIS stormwater management ordinances. However, you'd heard me talk about the topography, so the site is constrained in so much that we want to meet the existing grades at the property line. So there is, um, a constraint on the northeast, south and west sides of the property. With the grades and also with the intent of this building being a slab-on-grade building, not stepping with any of the topography that would need to be relatively flat within those parking areas in order to serve the building. We are proposing a retaining wall around the remainder of the detention basin on the south side. And that retaining wall is proposed between zero feet and a maximum of seven and a half feet on the western side of the, of the detention basin. Therefore, we are requesting a variance for wall height. Now, picture the detention basin. The wall is actually inside the basin, so it is, uh, internal to the basin. It will be, with the lobe side being the basin itself. Now, your ordinance talks about, uh, where the walls can be, walls can be located in the heights of those walls. Walls in the front yard has, has a maximum permitted height of four feet. And walls in the side yards with a maximum height permitted of six feet. With the seven and a half foot high retaining wall on the western side and, and a zero to seven and a half foot if you go from east to west on the southern side of the detention basin, we would, would need a variance for the wall height. If we were to make the wall a tiered wall and meet the height requirements, what that would do is it would reduce the volume within the detention basin. We don't think that the walls can be seen, um, from the campus drive. Um, but it is, it is required in order to accommodate the detention basin. The site has been graded following the same drainage patterns from north to south. We have proposed new storm, stormwater collection systems throughout the site to collect the runoff from the roof and from the pavement areas, the parking areas, and discharge into the proposed uh, stormwater facilities. As part of this project, we are proposing three subsurface detention basins made up of a series of HDP pipe interconnected pipes to accommodate the water quantity that is required as part of the stormwater management for this site. So you can see on the western side of the building under the parking area, we have one detention basin, that's detention basin number one that collects runoff from the western and portion of the northern side of the site as well as a portion of the building. And it does drain into detention basin, subsurface detention basin number two on the south side of the building, which ultimately drains into the existing basin, the surface basin that will be modified as part of the project. And then on the eastern side, we have a proposed uh, subsurface basin number three that will collect runoff from the north, from the east as well as a portion of the building and discharge into the existing modified detention basin on the south side. Ultimately, this, uh, this, this whole area will continue to function and discharge through and to the detention system on four campus drive. We call that the ribbon pond system and ultimately continue to flow through the systems throughout the campus in the campus-wide stormwater system. Now, the stormwater management design was included in a report that we submitted as part of the application. It's dated June twenty twenty. And it does discuss how all the, provides all the calculations and shows how we are in conformance with the New Jersey DEP stormwater rules as well as the Parsippany Troy Hills stormwater ordinance and RSIS specifically addressing peak flow attenuation, water quality, groundwater recharge as well as soil erosion and low impact development. The majority of the existing improvements on the sixteen thirty-three Littleton tract will be demolished, resulting in a reduction of impervious coverage to that modified existing detention basin. You, if you recall, I told you that the majority of sixteen thirty-three drains to the two campus basin. So as a, as a total, there is a reduction of impervious coverage of about one acre. The basins themselves, the subsurface basin as well as the existing above-ground modified basin will normally be dry except during storm events where runoff will be detained and released at a reduced peak rate. And the basins are designed to drain within seventy-two hours as is in accordance with the regulations. The stormwater management system will be required to follow a maintenance program. That maintenance program was submitted and within a manual that was part of the stormwater management report. That manual talks about the maintenance schedules. It provides forms for the maintenance personnel to um, fill out on, at specific times throughout the year and after a specific storm event. Lastly, let me talk about the utilities. If we can turn to slide number six. So slide number six of the A, A one exhibit is the utility plan C seven that was submitted as part of the site plan application. Utilities that serve the existing building today will, will, will be, uh, removed and we will utilize some of the connections that exist today. So the proposed building will include a sanitary pump station on, within the building on the northern side of the building. It will be pumped via a force main heading north and then heading west and will be located within that existing sanitary sewer easement that I showed you earlier, the pink color on the, uh, slide number, slide number three. But that is an existing sanitary sewer easement because the, the existing building actually has its sewage pumped up through that and connected to an existing manhole just at the northwestern side of the sixteen thirty-three site. We're proposing to um, pump the sewage from this building and discharge to the same location that it ties into today. Uh, the existing building ties into today. Water service for the proposed project will be provided by Parsippany Troy Hills Water Department via a main extension that will be looped around the development. We're proposing to connect this looped main um, within the driveway air system, driveway at, uh, on the western driveway, looping all the way around the site, the northern side of the building, along the eastern side of the building and connecting back to the existing water main located in Campus Drive. Several fire hydrants are proposed throughout the development. The fire department has suggested relocation of several of the hydrants and the addition of uh, one additional hydrant, which we will incorporate into the revised plans. The gas for the development will be provided by New Jersey Natural Gas. Electric service via JC P and L. Data and telephone by Altice and Verizon. All of the utilities will be installed underground in order to, um, serve this development. The final design of the utilities and the services will be coordinated with the various utility companies, assuming this project is approved and moves forward. And that is all I have in the summary of the site improvements. Our, our landscape architect will talk about site lighting and landscaping.
A question, Chairman, uh, when you had laid out the procedures for the hearing, um, just, would you like, um, board members to ask questions for, or each witness or?
I, I would like the board members and our board professionals to be able to ask questions of each witness as they go.
Okay.
Alright. And so i- if you've completed your testimony, then, um, Mr. Cagiano, do you have any questions, uh, for the witness?
Um, yes, I just wanna, just for some clarity for the board and myself. Um, sixteen thirty-three Littleton, lot three oh one. Um, I wasn't quite following along, but so you are going to permanently, um, reduce the impervious area on that lot from what the existing impervious area is to what's proposed in the stormwater management plan?
That's correct. The
If I, if I could just put a highlight on that, right now, uh, there's no development plans for sixteen thirty-three. However, when there is a, in the future, a development plan for sixteen thirty-three, there will have to be a modified stormwater system, um, on perhaps this property as well as sixteen thirty-three. But since there is nothing planned for the time being, would, if the improvements would just be removed so that they, they won't impact the stormwater until there's some future design, so.
Okay, my, my concern is, and, and, um, Mr. Carlson, I, I just wanted to see how we have to, if there needs to be a deed restriction to that, we're, we're basing this design and this stormwater management system on a reduction in impervious, um, area on the adjoining lot. When that lot in the future, at some future time that gets developed, there would be no link to, uh, the future developer to know that this, uh, this current application is predicated on that, that reduction. So, uh, is there any way that we could maybe deed restrict that or at least no deed notice that that would have to be addressed at the time of a development?
Yeah, that sounds like it makes a lot of sense to me. Uh, Mr. Tom Lockian, would you, would you agree?
Uh, you know, since there will likely be a plan within several years for sixteen thirty-three, I would be hesitant to restrict it. However, for purposes of notice, that, you know, whenever something is proposed for sixteen thirty-three, that the stormwater system on two campus will have to be revisited, that's perfectly acceptable. Because we're gonna have to rethink the stormwater design for these properties when something new is proposed in sixteen thirty-three.
And I, I think that gets the job done.
I agree. Um, and just for, again, for clarity, uh, the discussion on the retaining wall, I understand the purpose and, and was, and then just for the board's, uh, 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 clarity, could you, uh, describe the change in elevation or the height of the wall, the relative height of the wall as compared to, say, the Campus Drive front yard property line or the Campus Drive curb line? Basically, what is the height difference from the curb line of Campus Drive to the top of the proposed wall, that, that seven-foot wall that you referenced?
There, it's actually, if you're standing on Campus Drive, the, the area between uh, Campus Drive and the retaining wall will be relatively flat. So that, um, you're going to the retaining wall and then from the retaining wall, it would drop down to the elevation in the basin. So for all intents and purposes, it's, you wouldn't see the retaining wall. It's what we call a reverse retaining wall because it is below the elevation of Campus Drive.
Okay, just, so, to be clear, so on that western side, the top of that retaining wall elevation is approximately what? And then the curb line
Sure.
Is approximately like, just so we, we have a rough number of what that, the difference in elevation is.
Um, the, it does, you know, Campus Drive does drain from west to east, so it does vary, but for the most part, if you're standing on Campus Drive, uh,
That, that could actually be higher than the top of that wall. Campus Drive appears
Oh, yes, Campus Drive is higher than the, well, depends where you are on Campus Drive, but
On the western side, let's say.
On the western side, on Campus Drive, we are, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a, um,
Very small text.
Yes, very small text, hard to, hard to read even with my glasses. Um, we are at elevation three forty and then the top of the wall is at about elevation, oh, you, you did.
Three thirty-seven, so the wall is actually lower than Campus Drive at that location. And I think it's similar on the west side, so I just wanted to be clear that, that this wall is not sticking up. It's, it's, it's a wall that's down in the basement, basin, even though it is a seven-foot-high wall.
Correct. Correct, so if you were standing in the basin and turned around and looked out towards Campus Drive, you would see the wall. That was where you would see the wall, but you would have to stand, be standing inside the basin to see the wall that is closest to Campus Drive. The wall, I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you. And then my last question is regarding the loading. Um, you see the load is in the, the northeast quadrant and access to the building, particularly for like all the Amazon deliveries and UPS and FedEx that people get every day. Um, would they be able to access the building from that loading area or would these Amazon trucks be, need to be positioned someplace else to get deliveries to the building?
Um, when you hear a little bit more about the architecture, you'll, you'll be able to, uh, understand that. I, I do know that the idea, the intent is that the service area is at the rear of the building and that there is a service room, if you want to call it that, and that's where the utilities are. Um, they're, they may accept some deliveries to the front as well. It will depend, I think, upon the management company and where, where the, um, where they ultimately need to store, say, the, um, packages in order to, for the residents to come and pick them up. But if, if we can defer that to the architect, he will have, give you some more detailed information.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um, and Susan, any questions from you?
Yeah, I think similarly to Andrew on, on sixteen thirty-three Littleton Road. I mean, it's, it sounds like any future use of that site has been, not been determined. Um, but can you speak to what infrastructure will remain? Um, it was a little bit fuzzy on that and I think maybe it hasn't been clear tonight. On, what will remain on that property and perhaps later, I think it might be a landscaping question. You know, what that's, that lot is going to look like in the, in the interim before some future use?
Sure, the, the, um, if you can maybe zoom in, Tom. There, there's the, the existing parking area that's on the south side of sixteen thirty-three. Um, if you can go up a little bit, move the image up. There's a portion of the existing parking area will remain. The driveway itself that is, um, shared between sixteen thirty-three and two campus as well as those handful, I think it's about twenty-three spaces that are on the shared driveway. That is what is proposed to remain. So getting, I'm getting a lot of feedback.
I think that was my paper rustling. So, um, if you can move the image a little bit so we can see closer to Littleton Road. Um, so obviously the, the building goes away and then I got parking and that drive, the driveway as it curves around, all of that is also going to be removed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And then perhaps, um, the landscape architect can speak to what that treatment of that area will be, uh, in the short term when we get money. Um, and will another witness be addressing the parking variance? Parking setback.
Oh, thank you for, I, I, I'll let me just show you where this is. I'm sorry, I missed that. We do have a request for a, a parking setback variance. There is, um, an area on the southeastern side of the easternmost parking bay where the forty-five shared parking spaces on two campus uh, don't marry up to the shared parking on the east side. Just to set the stage, those thirteen parking spaces that go from the southernmost, southeasternmost side of our parking lot, uh, to thirteen spaces. to 13 spaces are we are requesting a variance for the setback because that's not immediately adjacent to a shared, the shared parking area.
Just for the board's clarification, the zoning allows for parking to be basically along the line when it's shared. But I think those 13 spaces happen not to be shared, but there's, they're still in that. So that's, that's the situation that creates the need for that variance.
That's correct, and to keep the parking in alignment, as well as provide the parking for the development. You can see it in this, the southeastern most, the 13 most parking spaces there. I don't know if you can zoom in, Tom. It's the setback at that location where the parking is setback only a foot from the, from the setback line, but you can see that it's at minimum 21 feet away from the parking area on Four Campus. Plus, in that, the majority of those 13 spaces, it's nearly, it's nearly 40 feet to the driveway on Four Campus.
And just one more question, I think while you're zoomed in, if you could scroll down. Can you, at this scale, show us a little bit more where the additional sidewalk is proposed to the bus stop?
Sure, if you can scroll over to the western driveway, please. Okay, so if you can see where the ADA parking spaces are in blue, from that point, a connection would be made to, to the shared driveway. And then going straight down or south along the eastern driveway, all the way out to the bus stop, which is just, just to the east of the driveway near where there's an existing light fixture. So we're proposing to provide a sidewalk there for access into the development for the business, if you go to the bus stop.
Thank you, that's all I have for this witness.
Do any members of the board have questions for Ms. Ruskin, the engineer?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Mealy, go ahead.
Ms. Ruskin, in his report to the board, Andrew Cangiano, under the utilities category, item three states, the applicant should provide an estimated water use report. Can you give us some testimony on that?
Sure, as part of this project, you know, based upon the New Jersey DEP and RSIS requirements, there's a proposed average water demand that we've calculated based upon this development and is based upon the number of one, two, and three-bedroom units is 26,585 gallons per day. It's the proposed water demand.
Would there be any way to tell what that usage was back when those buildings were occupied? It's kind of far back.
I believe that we could get some, we, we might be able to get some actual water bills, but I don't know what it is, I mean, we could calculate it based upon the square footage, but that's not an, an actual number, that's a planning number.
I would presume that apartment usage might be higher per whatever, per unit than any apartment, or rather, any commercial project, is that true, or?
That's, you're correct for a straight office development, if there was any other, like lab use or anything like that, not in this particular development, but in office combined use, might have a little bit higher water demands, but generally residential has a higher water demand than a straight office.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
Couple of questions. You mentioned that there's a waste, a sanitary waste pump. Are you providing a generator for power failure backup?
Yeah, yes, they're all sanitary. Pumping stations would require a generator.
Okay. How many EV parking spaces are you providing?
How many, I'm sorry, what?
Electric vehicle.
Oh, we're not proposing any electric vehicles charging stations as part of the project.
Parsippany happens to like green, and that goes along with green. Is it possible for you to reconsider that?
We can, I mean, we can talk to our client, but as of now, there's, they're, they're not proposing any as part of the project.
I would suggest that you look into that. And the other thing is, you mentioned Verizon and Altis. The township has had terrible service from Altis. Have you considered talking to Verizon about supplying FiOS?
That is something that we will do as part of the design of the building itself during construction, during the construction document phase. But thank you for that insight, we will definitely take that under advisement.
Just as a backup on that, if you, you look at any of the neighbor comments that get posted regularly, Optimum Altis is not one of their favorite suppliers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members with a question? All right, I, I have a few myself. Concerning the, the parkage between Two Campus and, and Littleton, it doesn't seem as if you have much separation between those two properties. Did you mention something about those parking spaces being shared? Or are those parking spaces on the western side intended just for Campus two, or Two Campus?
Okay, so I, can you zoom into the plant of the parking there, please? So there's, there's two, there's a reciprocal agreement in place or easement in place for parking. Assuming this project moves forward. On the Four Campus, you can see it in the lighter shade of gray. That's 45 parking spaces that the Two Campus residents can use if needed. And similarly, there is a 40, a easement that would be in place on the northernmost 45 parking spaces on the eastern side of the parking area, immediately adjacent to Four Campus. That can also be utilized by the Four Campus office building if needed. So we call that, you know, the shared parking between the entities.
Okay, and, and Ms. Vavate, you spoke about some of the things around shared parking which are permitted, but, you know, I, I want to question whether or not that is relevant for residential and commercial use combined versus, or residential and office use versus maybe what would have been reasonable for office in office?
Actually, it tends to make a lot of sense, Chairman, in the sense that the peak parking demand for office and residential are typically aligned. So when, when most residents are out and, you know, going to their jobs, not in a COVID world, they're not using that parking, whereas the office tenants do need that during the day. And then the reverse is true, when, when folks come home from their jobs at night, the office parking is empty and available. And, and so that is one reason why, you know, in the conceptual planning as part of the affordable housing plan for this particular site, shared parking was contemplated as a way to help the applicant, you know, meet his parking obligations and also in recognition of that efficiency.
Yeah, I could certainly see where it would have some benefits in terms of less impermeable space. I guess my concern would be having access to this site as a security risk. Okay, I'll just leave that one hanging out there.
I was gonna say, I would think that would be something for the applicant to address, it'd be their concern, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, when the township was preparing the ordinances for both this property as well as Two Campus down, you know, which you'll be hearing in about two weeks, the issue of shared parking was, was, was provided for. Because it just, given that there's just enormous amounts of, of surface parking, we wanted to be able to, since they were directly adjacent, to allow both properties to use them. It would just be a shame to have excessive coverage when there's just so much parking available. And the numbers provided, we satisfied the, the, what the township was going to allow for. Again, in order to just try to minimize the amount of additional blacktop.
Okay, and in terms of the, in particular for the 45 spaces which are non-adjacent to this building that, that are on the Four Campus, there shouldn't be any problems with 24-hour parking and the like in those spaces? There'll be adequate lighting as well?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I guess the, the proof will be in the pudding when, if we start to hear problems with, with car theft, et cetera.
Let's hope not, but.
Let's hope not.
It was okay.
Okay. In terms of the sign height, oh, I'm sorry, was there somebody else speaking up?
No, it's Andrew Cangiano, the board engineer, I just want, I had a couple follow-up questions just after you're finished.
Okay, all right, I'll make sure I come back to you. In terms of the sign height, was that limited to seven and a half feet, or is that supposed to be eight feet?
The, the allowance in the ordinance, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I believe we have an eight-foot requirement.
I think that's an eight-foot maximum.
Oh, and you're at seven and a half feet?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not height from the ground, that's height from the, of the actual sign itself?
No, that's actually the height from the ground. And so the sign itself would be, you know, smaller than that total height, so the sign base would be 24 square feet.
Okay, understood. In terms of the retaining wall, so my concern here is in terms of safety with, with potential for maybe somebody falling in. You might have, you might have identified it here, but is there a fence or anything around the detention basin to ensure people don't actually fall seven feet into the basin itself?
Yes, great question, yes, there will be a fence posing, an ornamental fence that would sit on the high side of the retaining wall, basically around the entire wall itself. There is also a suggestion, you see on this image here, which is slide number four of the colored site plan, there is where you see detention basin access, that is, access the basin for maintenance, that a gate of some sort be proposed at that location too, and the, the applicant is amenable to provide, continue that fence around and provide a gate that would allow for maintenance of the basin.
Okay, and when you say ornamental fence, will that still meet some safety standards for pedestrians?
Yes, it's proposed to be four feet high. And typical code is at least 42 inches, this will be proposed, it will be 48 inches, and that is in conformance with all safety codes.
Okay. That addresses my questions for the engineer, Mr. Cagiano, I'll turn back to you quickly before going back to any other board members. You're on mute, sir. Mr. Andrew?
Yep, thank you. I'm not sure if I missed your testimony on the soil movement that's required for the site. Did, did you go over that in detail and the, and the estimated quantities?
I didn't, but I can tell you what it is. Basically, we, we did look at the global cuts and fills, and we took into consideration the, what we call the material adjustments, Mr. Cagiano. As you are well aware, you know, it's not just cut and fill, you know, you have to take into consideration the fact that there's a large area of pavement and building that is going to be removed, so as an, we call that the adjusted earthwork analysis for the cuts and fills, so there is 12,400 yards of cut on the site, that's adjusted. 5,900 cubic yards of fill with, for, so there's a net cut or net export of approximately 6,500 cubic yards.
Okay, and that 6,500 yards is the net, but in reality, since you're removing a lot of the existing, the tumors materials, what is the, the actual amount of, of material that would be hauled off?
It's about 1,400 cubic yards. The, the material or the pavement area is a little over 5,000 or 5,100 yards.
I just wanted to get it on the record.
Thank you.
And then just in, in, in our comment number 17, as Mr. Mandell asked, you are, in fact, will be having a generator on site. You don't have to testify the locations of the generator now, unless you do know where it's going to be, but other equipment, water meter, salt if needed, hot box, I don't think Parsippany is going to require a hot box, but electrical transformers and the like, those items should be added to the site plan when the revised site plan is submitted.
Understood, and just as a side note, you know, there would not be a hot box, the service would be off of that new looped connection for the water. You would have to work with the utility companies for the locations of any transformers and coordinate, of course, internally on the location of the generator for the sanitary pump station.
Again, we asked that, when you do, you start to look at that, you know, should this be, be approved? Look at that, because a lot of times it's a surprise at the end of the day, when come times for construction and these, these features, the transformers and, and other, and other utilities end up in being undesirable locations. So we like to get that, that, you know, move in as quickly as possible, you know, once you get, if you get approval on this, that the coordination with the utility companies and the plans should be updated to include that information as much as you can get it.
Absolutely, thank you, we will.
All right, any other questions from the board?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Mr. DiPiero.
My questions, I guess, really are to Suzanne and, and our attorney. Susan, I don't know if you, were you part of any discussions that talked about the 1633 lot? Before we agreed, before the council agreed to zoning changes, we talked about that could and could not go on that lot. And I'm getting concerned now because if we're going to approve these applications piecemeal, this track now, another track later, and then they're going to leave 1633 to the end, I'm afraid, our ability to hold your feet to the fire and what we agreed to on the park, which would be across the street from Sedgefield, you know, might get lost.
Yes, Councilman, that, that is correct, there had been discussions as part of the rezoning that the applicant was exploring with, with Township Council, using 1633 as a park. And I don't know where those stand, I know there were some questions of appraisals. That process was ongoing, Mr. Tom Bellocan, can you comment on that?
Yeah, the, it was our understanding that the, the council was no longer interested in, in acquiring that particular parcel. So although the original plan was to develop Two Campus and convey 1633 to the town, that, it looks like that fizzled out, so perhaps if the council reconsiders and, and is interested in acquiring that parcel, it's available.
There was no, I've been on the council for a while now, and there's no, been no discussion of us considering not acquiring that property. So I don't know where that came from. We, we did, the original proposal was for Bank to go there, and we, we nixed the bank, okay? Then we talked about the township acquiring that property as a park because it's right across the street from a residential development, Sedgefield Development. And I'm afraid if we approve this application and the next application, we can't, we're losing our ability to hold your feet to the fire on what we agreed to previously.
Well, Councilman, I mean
Tell me what to do, attorney, tell me.
That was, the discussions regarding sixteen thirty-three were handled by the township's Affordable Housing Attorney, the firm of McMahon and Scotland. And we made efforts, I mean, again, the property is still available. But the word we got back was, at this particular time, there was little or no interest. So but if the if the council's interested, we'd be happy to resume those discussions.
Pat, were you a part of any discussion that said we had no interest? Because I've thought of part of any discussion that said that.
Sorry, Councilman, who was that question addressed to?
You.
Me, I thought it might be.
Who are not interested in that parcel?
I honestly, I do not recall there being a definitive no interest. The last I heard, there were discussions about, you know, the appraisal value of that property. But it had had not been resolved, and I thought that it was still sort of in the works. So that is something you could check in on with the township attorney, Leslie London, the Affordable Housing Council.
I'm frightened it was still on the works. As a matter of fact, my last discussion was with Paul Winger, your boss. And we were talking about the
Oh, it wasn't, it wasn't for lack of effort, Councilor. Again, we're still interested.
Right. Then Scott, I need your input. They're dividing these properties, but our ability to hold their feet to the fire on any agreement fizzles as we approve two separate tracks and leave that one to last. What do we do?
Councilman, you have to let me think on that, and I will regroup with you.
We don't, we don't need to make a, yeah, we don't need to make a decision now, but I want to make you aware of it because this is my concern.
I understand the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to hear something on that before the resolution gets approved.
That's fine. If I could just add a few more, again, as far as the the town's affordable housing, the fair share plan, it included this property, the two-campus building, as well as the three-campus. Sixteen thirty-three was left out of it. So where we stand is that there's a court order requiring, that required us to file these applications by a date certain which we did. And then as well as because there is a court imposed order regarding the water resources to be allocated because this project, two-campus and three-campus, the separate projects that we're going to be hearing in two weeks, are considered realistic development potential sites. These sites are given priority as to available water capacity from Parsipan Township Water Department. So the court, Judge Gauss, is keeping an eye on all these projects to make sure that they're being applied for, considered, approved in a timely manner so that, you know, affordable housing can be provided, you know, in in Parsipan Township. So that's the timelines and timeframes we've been working under is because, again, the town's special master, the Affordable Housing Judge, I mean, they're keeping tabs on this. So again, sixteen thirty-three, again, I'll I'll say it again, it wasn't for lack of effort. And sixteen thirty-three is still, there's no plans for it. If the council is indeed interested in acquiring it, we'd be happy to resume those discussions. But the word we got back was, there was just no interest at that at that time.
Well, I I would just offer that it's ten after nine, and we have, I believe, three more. It seems that we may be continuing to another night anyway. And I feel like this is an issue to delve into a little bit more deeply. Mr. Tom Bellockian, your point as well. In terms of water allocation, in the sense that you have an application that is in the process of being heard. So I hear you, but I think we can, we can address this issue without subsequent significant delay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Carlson on the legal aspect, obviously.
All right, are we ready to return back to questions? All right, Mr. DiPiero, did you have any further questions?
No, that was my primary concern, still is.
Okay. Well noted, I appreciate it, sir. I just had one additional question. I had some difficulty reading through the notes or the diagrams provided by the fire department. Were there any questions or concerns that that Ms. Ruskin you had regarding the requirements of our fire or recommendations for our fire department?
No, we did have some discussions with with the fire department, and we think we understand exactly what they want, and we can accommodate their comments and shifting of hydrants, etc.
That's exactly why I want to hear, I appreciate that. All right. Do any other speakers of the board?
Mr. Chairman? Tom Dinsmore?
Yes, Mr. Dinsmore.
For the engineer, following up on Mr. Frigieri's question there, is there also, to get back to a more green development, is there any consideration or any location for any solar installations of any sort?
Nothing, you, nothing is proposed at this time for solar, no.
All right, and just just a comment that I think that if you're aiming at an apartment complex to bring in new residents, you may find that you're going to need some sort of electric vehicle infrastructure. Because I think the the dwellers are going to demand it. So just just putting that there in case you find your the applicant decides that now is a better time to put it forward than later.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Yes, Mr. Mandell.
I'll just follow up on what Mr. Dinsmore just said, but all of the recent approvals by this board for similar projects have included EV charging stations.
So noted.
Yeah, we'd be, you know, if there's a demand, if we'd be happy to to retrofit the site to include, you know, EV. But at least in this particular developer's experience, they haven't had much demand at their other locations. So again, times are changing, but if there's a demand, there's there's no problem with them putting it in. But at the time being, it's not proposed, but it's it's not like we're against it. If there's demand, we'll provide it.
I appreciate your your comments there. Our experiences that the retrofit is apparently more significantly more expensive than the initial cost might be if you were to do it at this time. So we've been trying to help developers with that awareness.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this time? All right, well, Mr. Tabalkian, I'll allow you to call your next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Patty. Our next witness is Mr. Carmen, our landscape architect. That time was sworn in. Please give the majority sworn in, if you remember, you already did, you were Yeah, can you please give the board of the back, your professional background and experience so we can qualify it?
Sure, good evening, members of the board, board chairman. My name is Thomas S. Carmen with the firm Malillo Bauer Associates. We're landscape architects located in Brielle, New Jersey. A licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-seven. Have appeared on numerous projects similar to this one throughout New Jersey. I have had the pleasure of appearing before this board in the past. And this evening, what I will be doing is speaking on landscape architecture, planting, as well as the exterior amenities and site lighting.
If Mr. Carmen's qualifications are acceptable to the board, we'd appreciate it if he qualified as an expert in landscape architecture.
Do any of the members of the board have questions regarding this witness's qualifications? All right, hearing none, we'll approve this witness. Please continue.
Thank you. So this evening, as as mentioned, I'm going to do an overview of the planting design as well as exterior amenity spaces and the site lighting. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to focus on on this one exhibit right here. It is a color rendered plan. We've twisted it around from what you looked at previously. So you've got Campus Drive now on the the right-hand side. Four Campus is towards the top of the page, and sixteen thirty-three is towards the bottom of the the sheet down below. So we've prepared a richly detailed landscape plan, includes a diverse palette of hardy plant material in that we have a mix of ornamental planting and native planting proposed along the the frontage, as well as around the building foundation and the buffers themselves or the the edges. Deciduous shade trees proposed throughout the site, maples, oaks, linden, honey locusts are some of the the proposed varieties, and all proposed at the two-and-a-half to three-inch caliper. Evergreen trees are also proposed. Those range from six-foot height up to ten-foot height at the time of installation. Those are primarily along the rear property line where we've also incorporated some evergreen deciduous shrubs along there to provide some buffer. Along the buffer or the the edge of Four Campus, you see that there's some existing vegetation that is out there today that would would remain. And then we're supplementing it with some street trees along the parking lot. Now, this is an area that we're not intensely buffering like we are in the rear of the property for purposes of that shared parking that had been discussed, so you have some visibility through there. Along the Campus Drive frontage, you see that there are four existing trees, the larger trees that are to the northern portion of the site. Southern portion, they, there are no trees there, and we're just completing that that planting rhythm along there with a similar street tree. The the basin itself, similar to the surroundings along Campus Drive, would be a a planted basin, which primarily lawn. And then there's a a buffer of some shrubs along the along the parking edge in this location right here. Around the building itself, we really accent the architecture by looking at the placement of the windows and and balconies and such, and accent that with a mix of evergreen shrubs as well as deciduous. And then we face that down with some perennials, ornamental grasses to create some year-round interest and some texture. All the planting, again, is hardy for the area. We're selecting it for deer tolerance as well as located on the site for sun and shade conditions and provide that seasonal interest. When we, when we work through and select the various plant material, we're looking towards native species as well as species that don't require excessive water. As indicated, from a green standpoint, we want to do something that is that reduces the amount of irrigation, the plant beds themselves. We have drip irrigation, and that irrigation system is based on like a weather-based controller. So we're not irrigating at at any times that it does not make sense. Planting all located to define the spaces, respect utilities, and accent the monument sign. Ms. Ruskin indicated that the monument sign, in compliance with the ordinance and the materials of that, just complement the architecture as well. Now moving to the to the amenities, the there are the two courtyards. Courtyard on the on the left-hand side, plan left, is is a space that provides a mix of of passive as well as active amenities. We have a bocce court that's proposed. We have game table as well as some like more passive, some lounge seating that looks at a outdoor fireplace. And then some hammocks to to relax in, barbecue grilling counter and some table and chair seating. That's that courtyard one. Courtyard two is the larger of the courtyards, located on the right-hand side. And this is, this is the one that you'll hear next from Mr. Lassard in terms of architecture. And he'll indicate where the the club room or the interior amenities are, and that happens right in this zone and opens up towards this exterior courtyard space. Again, here we have barbecue grilling opportunities, a fire pit with some lounge seating around it and a pool area with ample chaise lounge seating around it. Pool itself certainly enclosed with the code-compliant four-foot fence. And then mention the barbecue grills and and fire pit. Those are natural gas and include the required emergency shut-offs and countdown timers. So should somebody not turn it off, it would count down and the timer would automatically turn it off. The all the the amenities that are proposed are lushly planted. We also have some private terraces that run around for the residential units that front on these areas. So even having those patio spaces and keeping with the design standards really helps to bring, you know, human scale to these to these courtyard spaces itself. The last item that I'm going to speak about is the site lighting. And what we do is we've used, we have two different style light fixtures that are shown within the submitted landscape plan and lighting plan set. We use a, it's a twelve-foot pole with a decorative two-foot-eight fixture on top of the pole. Those are located around the building, right around where the sidewalk is, as well as lighting the front parking lot itself. So visually, driving along Campus Drive, have that fixture along the 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 four-campus property line as well as the lot in the rear. The fixture is a little bit more utilitarian in that it's it's more similar to what you're seeing at some of the other parking areas. A bit of a taller pole, but both of these fixtures, LED fixtures that are dark sky compliant utilize some very efficient cutoffs in that we're directing the light just where we need that light to go. The courtyard spaces themselves, those are lit with a bollard light, again, LED, but just a low-level light to provide a safe level of lighting within the courtyard spaces. So we feel it's a very responsible lighting design in that we're minimizing glare through the fixture selection, kind of controlling light trespass while providing some some safe coverage. That that gives an overview of the landscape lighting and amenities. The one thing that I will mention, as indicated in while Ms. Ruskin was testifying, the landscape plan right now related to sixteen thirty-three, we are not, we don't indicate anything in terms of planting or seating to to stabilize the areas of existing improvements that are to be removed. So we can certainly, the the soil conservation plans do indicate the the required topsoil and seed mix for any areas that are disturbed to stabilize it. And we can just note that on our drawings as well to refer to to those civil plans for any of those areas. Again, that 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 provides the overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. I I vote for the question for Mr. Carmen. If the board of professionals or the board members would like to ask Mr. Carmen any questions?
All right. Very good. Mr. Caggianno, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I'll I'll leave the landscape. I have Mr. Vate at a follow-up on the landscape. But my question's, just a particular question regarding the the lighting. I see your lighting plan, you address adequately addressed the onsite lighting and still over over the property line. But in the in the area of where the walkways, the two walkways go from the onsite parking to the shared parking spaces on Four Campus Drive. Is there, was there an analysis of existing lighting there? It looks like the lighting is a little, a little too low to property, properly, you know, light that walkway. If it was not addressed, we ask that you look at that closely. You may need additional supplemental lighting at that, at those walkways. Could you comment on that?
Yes, we will. We we did take a look at that in that we know that the existing parking lot is Yes, we will. We we did take a look at that in that we know that the existing parking lot is is adequately lit today. The 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 lighting that is proposed on the two campus site itself, like you say, is down lower based on the grade change. We'll look at it one one last time, just to make sure if need be, if we need to do a bollard or something at the upper portion of the stairs, just to make sure that we get, you know, that safe illumination down the stairs itself.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That that's all I had, Chairman.
All right, Ms. Vate.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, all I had, I was about to lie to you. Andrew beat me to it. I had otherwise is on 1633, I think you touched on it, but it I'd like to see at least that go to on. I'm concerned about basically I saw facing that neighborhood along Littleton once some of those infrastructure items are gone and and just wanted to make sure that at a minimum it's lawn and there may be that you could explore and we're happy to work with you. You know, some pretty minimal screening of what's essentially, as I understand it, going to be a small parking area and driveway on 1633 so that because we don't know how long that's going to be in that condition. So let's make sure it's nice.
So we had some, the the rest of our discussion on that was that if we did, when we did purchase that property, that we would allow them to put buffer plants on our property to provide exactly what you're talking about. They could do evergreens along on our property to buffer their parking lot from the from Littleton Road.
That's correct. That was that was absolutely a part of those discussions was, you know, getting additional buffering on that parcel.
Yes.
Yeah, so we we would be happy to 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 work with you on that. Certainly putting the areas that are disturbed to 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 lawn. And then if there's some additional buffering that that needs to happen, we can, we can work.
Yeah, the discussion we had was you don't have room on your prop on that property that Two Campus Drive to to build the buffers that we're asking for. So they would have to be on the 1633 property to provide the buffer.
I I think he's dutifully taking notes.
Yep. So yeah, understood. We can, we can work with with the town on that to to provide adequate buffering.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All I have.
Thank you.
Ms. Vate, anything else?
That's all I have as well.
Okay. Any members of the board have additional questions for the landscape architect? I I just had a few myself. The tree species that you mentioned, I'm not familiar with all of them, but are these ornamental species? Will these be able to hold up to snow and other types of wind and inclement weather that we get in town?
These are the 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 couple of varieties that I I mentioned are shade trees like larger scale shade trees. And and all the varieties are are ones that are actually on the existing campus right now that are doing well. So we made sure that we're picking native varieties as well as others that we know are successful.
All right, thank you. Also, just tagging on, the fire department, I believe, asked to have some some of the locations with these trees removed to enable better access for their tower trucks. Are you familiar with those requests?
We we will comply with with any requirements that they have, certainly.
Okay, yeah, just please make sure those are noted for your plan going forward.
Sure.
All right. Okay, that concludes my questions. I'm just going to double check quickly with the board. Were there any other questions from board members? All right. Mr. Tom Balowkin, back to you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. My next witness is our architect, Chris Lassard. And Chris and everybody else who has previously sworn, I would ask that Chris not only introduce himself, but provide a background of his experience and education so we can qualify qualifies as an expert in architecture.
Thank you, Steve. Chris Lassard, CEO of Lassard Design located in 8521 Leesburg Pike, Vienna, Virginia. Been practicing in in Jersey for, I think, late 90s. I was looking at my diploma a minute ago and then all the names are faded. So it's been a long time. But I I think I've testified with this board, but I don't remember specifically, but I have testified and done a lot of work in New Jersey. I've obviously currently licensed. I graduated from Virginia Tech a long time ago.
If if Mr. Lassard's qualifications are acceptable, we'd ask that he be deemed an expert in architecture.
Do any members of the boards have any questions or concerns about this witness's qualifications? All right, this witness is acceptable. Please continue.
Thank you, Chris. Now, Chris, you designed this project. So can you please give the board an overview of the design? Both the elevations as well as the interior features and function?
Yes, thank you. The project size is 172 units, which includes 20% COA. The mix in the project is 76 one bedrooms that range from 650 to 922, 89 two bedrooms ranging from 910 to 1533, and seven three bedrooms that are 1121 square feet. Those unit totals include the COA. So there is no market rate three bedroom units in the project. For the COA, we comply with the requirements of COA, which has requires a seven one bedrooms, 21 two bedrooms and seven two two three bedrooms, which are mixed within the project. And what we've done is we've labeled them so you kind of know where they are and the different floors and things of that nature. So we comply with the COA requirements of mixing and the the minimum number of 20% of per zoning. You want us to go to sheet AO2? Actually, before you go and go to that, this particular perspective is from Campus Drive. So basically this to the left, the building by zoning is required to step towards Littleton. There's a requirement from the property line 60 feet that we need to be a three story element. We are more than 60 feet, but it is an angle requirement. So but we have nothing within the 60 foot per zoning. Also, we stepped the building and that gives us some of the human scale requirements that we do have design guidelines that there was a planning comment July 21st, 2020 with a BFJ planning. And there was questions of that report. We have answered those reports. I'm going to highlight some of them. Some of the requirements is stepping, some requirements are human scale. You know, the entrance to the building is to the left hand side where we have a two story element. So we have volume in the inside. But that two story element does create a human scale and the canopy helps that. We also realize that we have residential features. We have residential neighborhoods around us. At the same time, we're really at an office park. So we believe we're sympathetic to the office park in terms of general massing. Also, the flat roof design. Tom, if you want to go to sheet AO2. There was questions about loading. I don't know whether you blow up the loading to the left. That area right there, we have a parallel parking space for loading. If you notice, right behind that area, there's a double door for trash room. So they can, so they can unload trash and take it directly out for pickup. Right next to that is the loading dock. So they can also load and go through that corridor to one of the elevators, which is a service elevator to the rear. There's a total of three elevators. There is two to the right, which is off screen right now, and that one, which is the service elevator. At the same time, we have several loading because we have surface parking lots. You'll see it to the lower left, one residential entrance. They could still enter in the loading area. And there to the top right corner is another loading, not loading, residential entrance from the parking lot. From the courtyard, we have another load residential entrance also to the pool area. You go all the way to the right. Okay, that's the main entrance to the building, which has a many feature, but that also is residential area. We haven't designed the inside yet. We anticipate a fitness area, a club room, leasing space. This is also where the entrances for things like FedEx will be, even though there may be some deliveries to the rear, we we want to be able to control it with our operations and management company in the front. The 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 amenity space is related to basically the courtyard space. And inside will also be like live, not live work, but more like we work type workspaces, which are some of the features that Roseland is famous for currently. So that's basically the size of courtyards helps scale it too. If you go to sheet AO3. All right, these are the particular elevations. One of the requirements is the front sides and rear of the buildings need to be of similar scale, similar features, and basically fronts and all sides. You will see in the elevational drawing that is done, even though it's hard to read to the right hand side there. What we do is we have a legend, which we'll later on go over the material board, but we have a legend that basically indicates different materials and where they go. We have two different brick types, one darker and one lighter. We also have lap siding, which is the O2, which is fiber cement lap siding. And we have three different types of fiber cement panels that create the different colors depending on where they are. They relate to the entrance. We believe there's a lot of different materials, but it denotes, I think, a contemporary fresh type look. And we do meet the requirements and the guidelines for breaks within 100 feet for different materials. And I think it does fit in smartly with the office type buildings. The height of the buildings, even though I don't have my sections here, the height of the buildings and the in the top elevation, building elevation one is the elevation that goes towards Littleton and that other site we've been talking about. The the other elevation actually goes towards Campus Four's office building. But basically, the height of the building is four stories and it's 45 foot 10 from the floor to the top of roof. The average with the average grade, because there is grading going around the building, makes that elevation 49 foot six. At the step, which is on building elevation one on the left hand side, that's a three story step. That's at 33.2 to the top of the deck space there and with average grade calculations, 36 foot two. And like I said, that's a three story element, even though it has two story elements because of the volume. If you want to go to sheet AO4. Yeah, we'll focus in on building elevation four. Building elevation four is basically the view facing Littleton, which you you have a step. So there's a big break. So there's a step at each leg that comes out. There's also a fairly large courtyard that sets back. This is also has sudden exposure. So this is very animated towards that edge condition, which we think is very successful. Sheet AO4 has the material board that refers to the key elements. Oh, no, I think I'm on, oh, the next sheet was from the material boards. I think it's also done AO4. So we obviously need to work on our spelling and our numbers. The when there's a reference on the elevations, it references these numbers. And these numbers are are, you know, we can do boards that you can see the actual materials and touch it. But this will give you an idea of the two different brick colors. You you can see O5 is near the entrance point of the building and lower lower to the building. But these are the different color matches. We're also using wire mesh railings. There was comments and questions concerning type of green elements. We're, I'm in Virginia, which is near Arlington, which is the the capital of LEED, and we are not LEED certified in these buildings. We are using proper construction techniques to to get high values and well, oh, also there's a comment that came in. If you want us to send the material boards directly to you, so we can send them to you so you can actively touch some materials to help you understand them better. As for the LEED elements, we're going to use high construction techniques. We're going to use Energy Star, high values in the floors and roofs. And we have looked at photovoltaic. We've decided not to. And we're willing to look into it maybe later, but I think that's during the construction phase and the cost analysis. Now, I I know that the client, Matt Kelly, has done research on the uses of EV infrastructure, which they have the capabilities in their office buildings. We're going from their comments of of what the needs are and from their analysis. I know from Roseland's perspective on buildings they've done, they're always going to do things that the tenants want. So then they're better at analyzing it than I am. I think I listed on most of the questions. I'm willing to take some some of the questions you might have.
I have no questions for Mr. Lassard. I mean, the board members or the board professionals would like to ask Mr. Lassard any questions concerning his design. And again, as you offered, we'd be amenable to providing a physical a a version of this, but the real material board to Nora, so that could be in the plenty board office. So if members in the public are interested in in touching it and looking at it, we'd be happy to provide that.
Get muted, John.
Thanks, Steve. Ms. Vate, do you have any questions for the architect?
No, I'm, but I just, I I wanted to just acknowledge that, you know, we comment to make sure that they addressed the design standards that are in the zoning code and and those were addressed to our satisfaction.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cagiano, any questions?
Chairman, just a couple of questions. And one, it may be more of a site plan issue is is was my my earlier question and concern about deliveries and and there's really no good area right now on the plan with staging any kind of delivery or drop off or pickup from, you know, DoorDash to, like I said, Amazon or FedEx and the like. There there's just parking stalls and and my concern is, you know, it's not an ideal situation to have a a large building that someone may need to access or or wait there and you're you're, you know, potentially blocking you know, parking stalls either from someone exiting out of a stall or getting into a stall and and the like. It's just not an ideal layout. And I'm not quite sure who the question is posed to, but I I don't think it's a it's a great situation not having any temporary staging area or or drop off or you know, standing area for a vehicle. And and my other question is for the architect, just as a matter of routine, I'd like to get the details on how recycling and trash will be dealt with, not just from hauling away, but are there trash chutes and the like? Could you give a little detail on on how that works and what a typical resident would do and for their for their refuge, refuse?
Well, I think one of the comments and some of the answers related to delivery, we'll look into it in more detail with the management company. At the same time, you know, there's normal access in terms of move ins and move outs. You can control the locking and access to building. Some of the problems is you don't necessarily want access to building you can't control. So we've worked through some of the details on that. It's easier to do it when we have control points at the front entrance. That's for the daily deliveries of some of those things. Large items will still go will still go to the back loading area because it's the only way they could be taken in. But day to day, it's going to be handled at the front. We will look into better ways to manage that. The the there will be recycling bins in the trash room. And and they will be collected there and everything moved out eventually to be picked up by the by the pickup in the back loading dock area. Is there any other question or?
So the the resident would walk their trash down to the trash room. Is that is that correct?
Yes, there is. There is a Yes. There is a floor above the trash room. There is a trash chute area. But it is the back corner of the building where the trash room is located now. But there will be a trash chute and pickup of bins.
Thank you. Just going back again, I don't know that it's necessarily an architectural question, but more of a site layout question about not, you know, still providing the required number of parking spaces, but also maybe reworking this in some way to provide some kind of area so you're just not parked in front of parking stalls or blocking the aisle way for, for these deliveries that just from a practical nature, they just seem to be coming all the time now in 172 dwelling units that they, you know, there's a, there could be a vehicle there quite often.
Well, I mean, we are, according to previous testimony, we are over the minimum requirement by three spaces. We could allocate those three in order to take care of some of those drop-off points. But that's a, some of it is a building management decision on how they want to manage that issue.
I defer to the board on that if what their opinion is. But again, I just think it needs to be a little bit taken a closer look at from, from the layout, site layout.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could tag along to that, it's a good point. And I would add Uber and Lyft pickup and drop off, you know, I think we're just seeing greater demand across the board for, you know, short-term needs. So I would be in support of reallocating some of those additional parking spaces that may not be required.
And I'm a little confused still on this 1633. I think the engineer testified that several of the parking spaces along the existing, I guess I'd say, property line between 1633 Littleton and this property will remain. Is there an opportunity for shared or using those parking stalls in obviously an easement agreement for, to, if you need it, to grab a few more parking spaces and rearrange for some kind of drop-off area? That, you know, it's really a question for the engineer on that question.
I'd like to ask if Patty Ruskin can chime in on that particular issue?
Sure. We can, we need to work with the fire department. We can work with the township on the location of the spaces, the ones that, the spaces that remain on 1633 or will remain on 1633. Just don't know if there's a shared, if we can share parking per the ordinance on 1633. But if we could do it by easement, we'll definitely look into that and see about providing some additional spaces to accommodate the delivery. You know, we know that especially during COVID, it's been a lot, a lot more delivery that could happen. We will take into that consideration. And it also depends on any of the negotiations with the township on what's happening on 1633.
Well, I have a question or clarification with Patty. This is Chris Lassard. If we have three additional spaces currently, can't we, do you feel there's a need to have three at one time loading?
I can't hear you. I just hear something like extra.
No, no, I'm just saying with three additional spaces, is there a need for more than three quick drop-offs like an Uber and things of that nature, more than three?
I think, I don't think so. I mean, I can't say. I mean, it's all about the management and how management handles that as well. But we do have to take into consideration some of the comments from the fire department. We have to move around a couple of the island areas. So we just have to take a closer look between all of the different comments from the different departments as well as the planning board and make sure that we can accommodate all of those issues.
With regard to the Uber issue, some of these spaces be reserved for Uber pickup? And maybe that might provide some resolution.
Actually, the meeting chairman, that was the suggestion is that because the fire department has to review and approve any revisions to the, to the circulation, we would work with both the fire department as well as the township's professionals to see whether, and together with the management company, to figure out how many spaces closest to the main front entrance adjacent to the handicap spaces could potentially be short-term delivery, drop-off only, you know, versus parked 24 hours by residents. That way, those spaces could be the most convenient, one step beyond the ADA spaces, of course, to provide that. But that's something that's going to have to be thought through because, again, the fire department's very concerned about aisle width and making sure that their machinery can get around that corner. So we'd probably end up using the delineated spaces for that purpose.
Okay. And would you want all those spaces up by that front lobby or in proximity to residential entry points? Because I could see people from the far northern part not wanting to walk all the way to the southern parts of the property. That's a preference issue, not necessarily germane to our.
It's a preference issue, but as Chris mentioned, that the management company wants to have a controlled access point so strangers aren't entering the building. So having it like trying to focus deliveries and transient type activities in one main entrance point will at least be a safer type. But again, that's something that the management company will work out, what's best for the residents and the building operations.
That seems reasonable. Go ahead, Mr. Mandel.
Further on, I mean, right now, when you look at this, the handicap spaces seem like the ones where the Amazon vehicle is going to try to pull in. The UPS truck, which is way bigger than the typical Amazon van, is going to block a number of spaces there. So there's, you know, there's, there's issues with the, the constant in and out, the Amazon, the UPS. FedEx tends to be smaller like the Amazon vehicles. That you have to come up with something there. I don't know exactly what, but that's going to pose an issue and I don't want to see the handicap spaces blocked or eliminated.
That's, we will absolutely, that's of course, a FedEx driver cannot block a handicap spot. That's just forbidden. So, but then that's one of the concerns and one of the, one of the criteria that will be used when that, that final operational decision is made. Again, it has to be made in conjunction with both the fire department and the township's professionals.
All right. So I think we should, we should make that one of our, one of our line items here is that that conversation needs to be had and accepted by both the fire department. And Ms. Vivante, would you be the right person to join in that agreement?
Yeah, I'm happy to help the applicant coordinate with the fire department. I believe they may have already had some, some correspondence and discussions, but happy to assist in that discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I can follow up with the applicant.
All right. Any other members of the board with questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
For the engineer, I'm looking at the same plot, A02. And if the main lobby is in the bottom right-hand corner as we look at this, why would two elevators be all the way down the hall past three or four apartments? I don't understand that. Could you elaborate on that, please?
Well, also, I assume that you're, are you asking the civil engineer or the architect?
Well, the architect, if he could answer it.
Well, we, we have, if you notice next to the elevators, we also have another residential entrance fairly close to the parking plant area.
Yes.
Also to the shared parking that's in the, on the office site.
Why not have one elevator there and one in the lobby, in the general lobby area? I don't understand that.
Well, we think it's more centrally located where we have it. I mean, there may be a difference of opinion, but once you get into.
If I were to come to this building to visit a tenant and I'm in my eighties, I have to walk down whatever number of feet that is to the first elevator? Are you, are you kidding me?
Well, we think, we think it's in the proper location because you ultimately got to get, you know.
I disagree fully. I'm sorry. I disagree. But that's my opinion. I'm sorry.
We have plenty of different entrance points in the building in terms of the main floor, but then once we get up, we're trying to basically load the building from one end to the other, which is why we have one elevator to the left side of the page and the two.
I see that one and that one's fine, the one over on the left. But I've been in many high-rise buildings in my years and I've never seen a situation where there's a main lobby, but there's not an elevator right there. Sorry about that.
Thank you for your point.
You're welcome.
Yeah, board members with a question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Please go ahead.
Someone can walk me through. A new tenant is moving in. A large truck loaded with their furniture, not a tractor trailer, but a single unit, large truck is going to pull to the rear of that building. And what is, while they're unloading that truck, where is he parking?
In the shaded area.
That's it? Okay. That's a.
And because, and because this is going to be, management will control, because it's going to be a single management building, it's not a condo. So the, the building manager will be able to coordinate and schedule bins and move outs so that there's not five people moving in on the same time, same day. So that, that's, that's how it usually works in a building like this.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Just a question on the floor plan. I'm looking at the fourth floor layout and I, I just noticed that one of the floor plans seems much larger. I just wanted to clarify what the use for that was. B3?
Give me, give me one minute. Yes, that is, the B3 is a, is a larger unit partly in order to obtain the, I don't know if we have it as an exhibit, Tom. I don't think it's in the group. But it's in the original package on, listed as sheet A05 in the original package. That is the unit specifically designed when the building required to step back to three story within 60 feet of the property line.
Okay. And so as a result, that's an individual unit that has access to that large terrace that, that we saw on, on your elevations?
Yes.
The other question I have is regarding your first floor layout. I noted some of those courtyard units don't, some of those corner units, it seems strange that they didn't have patios. It looks like your, your B2s and your A2s in those corner units seem to have patios except for two of them. What was the decision behind that?
I'm looking, you want to look at the first sheet, Tom?
You're on the correct page. And in your smaller courtyard, it's a B2 COA that, which seems to be lacking a patio. Yep, right in that area. And in the, in the larger courtyard, it's an A2.
Looks like there aren't patios. You want to blow up the, that one they's referring to in the left-hand corner?
Yeah, the B2 COA. As I noted on the color rendering, it appeared as if there were some units without patios that just didn't seem to make sense. And I just wanted to.
We don't always, sometimes they, they request us to not always do patios. So there's a premium value for the ones with patios. But to tell you the truth, on this example, I'm not as sure whether the graphics are showing patios or not. How about the landscape package, Tom? Do, is that patio in the landscape package?
Yeah. So within the, within the landscape set, there are some units that do not have patios. The reason being is just proximity to some of the spaces as well as the impervious coverage, right? We were, as indicated, we were over and so we picked and chose where we, where we were going to do some patios.
Okay, understood. All right. Any other questions? Yeah.
Just to follow along with that, can you confirm where the have patios and which
I can. I can look back at, let me, let me jump back to the landscape exhibit because I know that that has them clearly color rendered. So it's, it would be, it's either these, well, there's, there's a discrepancy here because we show this one and this one not having it, but we show one here, right? So when we go back to the, the architectural plan. It looks like this, it looks like that A2 doesn't have one, but I guess maybe it does. So it might be these two B2, it's just those two B2 COA units that, that do not have it.
So it looks like we're taking patios away from COA.
Yeah, there's, I think, at least one other ground floor COA unit. Does that have a patio? It's, I think, A1?
This A1 right here backing up to the barbecue. You're correct. That one does have.
Yeah, that's kind of an issue if the only ones that seem like they don't have patios are the COA units. Might, might want to take a look at that. I mean, I, I know that's a provision of the affordable housing standards. It's not supposed to be mixed, but you know, the, the policy is that they should be interchangeable or at least not, you know, recognize the COA units from the other units.
Yeah, now that was my concern, being able to recognize that as, as being COA.
Yeah, it's a really good point, Chairman. And, you know, to the extent that they affect impervious coverage, I don't know what the impact is. You're already a bit over.
Right.
I'd suggest looking at it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we're running up against our curfew.
Yes, sir. Are there any other questions for our architect at this time? All right. Well, as, as Mr. Mandel pointed out, we are past the 10 o'clock time, so we will not be taking another witness. And as stated, we'll, we'll postpone the rest of this meeting. Or another date. And Nora, I believe you had some thoughts about how we would go about postponing?
That's correct.
Oh, Chairman and Nora, can I, can I just chime in? If the Plenary Board looks for two weeks, this same exact team will be back before you in the same format for the three campus property. So right now, we got through most of my case, but still we have our traffic expert, Craig Paragoy, as well as Tom Golden, the applicant slash owner, who's going to provide some planning testimony as to the few variances. But the same exact team will be before you in two weeks for three campus. If it's possible, if we take a piece of that meeting before we even start three and just finish this one. But I'll leave it up to the chair and Nora. You, I mean, you can manage your calendar. But again, the same exact team will be here in two weeks.
You know what? That's fine. It'll be fresh in everyone's head if we start out with this application, January 25th, and then move on to the other one.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Frigieri here. I, that sounds good to me as well, except for the fact that it feels like there's a number of outstanding issues, some of which revolve around the park, potential park and that transfer of property. We, I don't know if we're going to have the answers that we need. We may in two weeks. I'm just throwing that out there because if we don't, then this will turn into a third session when those things are resolved. So just take that into consideration before we lock anything.
Sure. Mr. DPR, do you have an opinion on that? And this, this was certainly the area of your concern with regards to the 1633 property.
Well, I, I'm going to check with the other council members to make sure my memory is not flawed. I'm going to check with Susan also. That, that 1633 needs to be addressed before I'm comfortable voting on this one. Before I'm comfortable voting on this one.
Um. So uh.
Now, we talked about, let me just interrupt you for a minute. When, when we were talking about this entire Matt Cali project proposal. And, and we know, I, I understand it's part of our, our COA agreement, okay? But the apartment complexes and sixteen thirty-three are all an integral part of our discussion. So to, so to look at this now and say they have no plans for sixteen thirty-three makes me very concerned.
You know, um, I understand your concerns, Councilman. Um, but again, Matt Cali is very interested in resuming discussions with, with the town to convey sixteen thirty-three. But even assuming we worked on it day in, day out. It takes time to do that. So again, Matt Cali is committing, there's no plans for that property. Um, it's not for sale, but it's being, it could be made available for purchase by the township. Um, we'd be happy to discuss it. We really would.
So C- Councilman DiPiero, I have, I plan to set up a call with Mr. Tom Blakie and uh, Leslie London and any others who may be required. Uh, as soon as possible, hopefully this week. Um, to resume those discussions. It, it's unlikely that we would even in a month's time have. A firm agreement in place with appraisals and all of those things that are required, but I think we can certainly. A lot more clarity in the next two weeks. And address that issue.
Okay, but my, my, before we vote, my concern is, once we've won on these two properties. We've lost any. A- any, any. Damage we have to negotiate even a price.
Sure. Understood.
Mr. Carlson, what are the, uh, what's the jurisdiction of the planning board on, on this matter?
I'm sorry, Chairman, in what regard?
Uh, regarding to potentially holding up a, a vote on this plan. Uh, based on the sixteen thirty-three property.
Well, my, my advice to the board would be let's. But be- before I give advice to the board, let's, let's see if this actually turns out to be an issue that we need to address or not. Um, I mean plainly, we're not voting tonight, so. You know, my, my advice would be to carry this to uh, the twenty-fifth without need for further notice. Um, continue at that point, and this very well might take three nights to, to complete. But let's, let's see, you know, there's those several issues on the table now, maybe we can. Clear half or more of them at the next meeting and, and then focus on what's left.
Okay, that seems acceptable. And uh. Mr. Tabatian, um, this, are you aware of the concerns of the board at this time so that we prepare for our next meeting?
Absolutely, we will be, we will be, we will certainly be prepared.
Mr. Tom Blakie, and just to be clear, um, we have your clients consent. Uh, to extend or to carry this to the twenty-fifth, no need for further notice. And uh. The tolling of any, any time period until then.
The, the applicant consents to that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And so we will conduct the business on twenty-fifth for the uh, for the two-campus drive property first and, and get that completed before. Addressing uh, three-campus drive. Correct?
Very good.
Okay. Um, and we'll probably, we will have the same rules in place in terms of time and, and uh. That, that we covered today as far as the ten o'clock curfew, et cetera.
Very good.
Okay, okay. Um, alright, so with that said, I'll accept the motion to carry this uh, forward to. The uh, the twenty-fifth of January?
I'll move then, it's more.
It's more. And Millie, okay. Uh, Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. DeDeet?
Yes.
Councilman DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ginsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Mr. Mandel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Von Achem?
Yes. Alright. This application has been carried forward. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Thank you very much. We look forward to carrying to it.
Thank you. Uh, be- before I consider a motion to adjourn the meeting altogether. Um, you, you know, it occurs to me that we've had numerous instances of uh. Of the EV vehicles as well as, as well as other potential concerns around green. Green technology on these plans. And unfortunately, because of the way that our, our. Our parking um, ordinances are laid out, et cetera. Um, we don't really have the teeth to force these things onto applications. Um, my recommendation is we start looking into. Um, what kind of ordinances we can provide to the council for their approval. Regarding EV parking spaces and, and other revisions to parking requirements. Um, how does that sound to members of the board?
I agree.
Alright, no vote here, I just wanna get your informal opinion.
Well, be- besides the EV, you know, uh, solar power, green roofs. I mean, these will all be good ideas to start incorporating in the township codes.
Yep. I agree, I, I think EV is a, is a easy first step potentially, so that's why.
That's, that's, that's very simple, I mean, when they're building.
But Mr. Chairman, if I may, um.
Sure.
I think most of you know I'm, I'm on my own planning board, and we had our reorg meeting last week, and this, this exact issue came up. And the question of, well, how, how do we know how many EV spaces we should ask for or require? And it's so something that, that my board's looking at, and we just got today an ordinance that Westfield has just adopted. So I can stay long, um, you know, it's good to know the other communities are looking at this. So it's something we can look at as well.
Okay, great, so we're not out in Westfield. I don't, I don't mind being the first one going, but it's always easier to steal from other people. Alright, so I, I just want you to, you know, in the spirit of, of my comment from the other week, uh. You know, let's look at these opportunities where we see some inconsistencies against, against what. What we intend in the master plan. Let's start getting these ordinances put together and proposed to the council. Um, you know, we're not looking to take their responsibility for them, but. We, we certainly had certain intentions with our master plan, and let's start putting them into uh. Uh, getting them into uh, our ordinances.
Can I make one other point, Mr. Chairman? It's Mr. Fergieri.
Yes, go ahead.
And I, I wa- I wanna hop off here too. I had a question for a while this evening, and I, I, I wasn't sure who to address it to, and I wasn't even sure if it was applicable. But do we know with developments like this? When the power is the, for example, I live in Lake Parcipity, you know, if, if the wrong person sneezes, sometimes we lose power. And uh, these buildings have been dark for some time. And there has been development, as we know, around us. So when a building like this comes online. Are they pulling from the same source as everybody else? And do we even know that? It's not their problem per se, but it may be our problem because what happens if they're robbing Peter to pay Paul? With limited electrical power and. I think it's a, it's, it's a real thing, and I don't, I, like I said, I wanna, I, I needed feedback. I wasn't comfortable just throwing a question out there. Cause it might not even be for them to answer, and it may be a simple answer.
Uh, Bruce?
I don't know.
It, 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 it is reasonably simple. Uh, yes, we're all getting the power from the same place. But the reason we go without power during these storms are the lines go down. It's not the amount of. Electricity that's in the system. It's the fact that the. The pipes, so to say, are no longer there and they're, they're broken.
Okay.
So that's not gonna be an issue. The issue's gonna be when the pole goes down on uh, two O two. That's the issue.
Yeah. You know, I would say though respectfully, um, you know, my short experiences in the solar industry. Those substations do need to be managed, um, and if they're not sized right for the, uh, for the neighborhoods or. Or the neighborhood's power needs, there's a potential that, that uh, the draw from these substations could be an issue too, I guess. Um, so. Uh, you know, to Mr. Fergieri's point, is there somebody who we can talk to, um, who would be able to provide? The board with uh. You know, an appreciation for whether or not that utility is adequately sourced.
That's a valid concern, but it's out of our purview. Regarding any particular application, it's not our purview.
Well, we do ask about the other utilities, electrical utility might be one of those.
Well, that's stretching it, but okay.
Stretch if, if we can fit it in, and it's appropriate.
Well, I guess the question has to be asked of Jersey Central if they. Feel that they have the. The capability to provide on that side of town.
Right, or P S E N G in, in the other part?
The other side of town, yeah.
Okay.
Those were, those were office complexes that were provided by JCP and L. And, and offices that are all lit up all day, all day and. To the night. Capacity is probably already there for those buildings.
Probably.
It may have initially been planned for those buildings, but I'm sure that as um. As they realized, electrical needs aren't, aren't there, they may have uh. Managed it differently.
Reallocate is the word for.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I think it's worth considering, uh, Ms. Vivate, um, who? How would we go ahead making sure we got some sort of um. Getting this in the, in the pre-work package? Is that, is that something we could do?
Well, I think I'm gonna have to defer to Andrew Canjiana. Uh, this is your bucket of mine, Andrew.
Before, and you're exactly right. It, it's a matter of feeling. Uh, we call it a will serve or ability to serve the property and. And anytime a new service comes in, these particularly electric or gas. They do their own, they have their whole team of, of, of specialists. And they evaluate the whole area, they evaluate the substations, they evaluate the local transformers and interconnects. And it's a matter of, uh, I guess, making the condition of approval. Or the uh, 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 you know, uh, right to, to, to pull building permits. Condition on that the utility company is free, that they do have the capacity to provide service. Just water or sanitary, and you know, you really can't uh, move a project along until you have those approvals in place. Um, but, and, and as a, as a practical note too. You know, with the LED lighting and all the other uh, 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 energy-saving devices. Um, I'm not an expert in the field, but I've heard several times that the draw and the demand for electricity. For individual uh, properties actually is, is a lower demand than it would have been, say, twenty years ago. Uh, so all those factors, I, 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 I don't know that it's, that it's uh, as uh, uh, you know, a, uh. An issue for the board to be uh, uh, concerned about it, but, but it should be, I guess, in. In the standard language that a project can't move forward should there not be adequate. Uh, you know, uh, utility capacity for whatever the utility is.
Is this something that might fit into our completeness review?
No, I, I don't know that it's legally in, in the board's purview either.
Okay.
But it, it, it's not an issue that, and, and to your original point, the, the losses of power is when something goes down. And they do, I mean, on the hot summer day, they do ramp up and, and, and for power. But I think the issues that we all see with the loss of power is, is more related to, to an issue and some kind of uh. Uh, failure of their system, not, not a straight-up capacity issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll also just say that, um, you know, on the other utilities, the water and sanitary sewer. You know, for the vast majority of the town, those are town utilities, so. You know, those entities are reviewing the application as part of the process anyway, so.
Yeah.
Where it's, where it's in the township, I think, I think we're getting a good look at it. Um, where there are other utilities. You know, do any kind of a will serve confirmation, that can just be part of the standard solution language.
Okay. Well, Bruce, I'm not sure we satisfied your, your concern completely, but.
I'm glad that we're talking about it, and at the end of the day, I'm a traumatized Lake Parcipity resident. So I think of it often, uh, you know, but anyway, I, 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 there may be something there. Uh, obviously, a power company is not gonna say no to more sales, uh, unless they really have to, let's face it. But at the same time, you know, um, there could be repercussions if something went wrong with all the, all the residents who are already here. And they see that building, you, you know, lit up, but they're dark.
Yeah, and, and hey, my, my comments about the uh, the safety in, of, of vehicles and, and whatnot come out of the uh. Recent wave of uh, vehicle issues I've seen in Lake Par, so.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate where you're coming from. Alright. I, I don't wanna prolong this anymore. Um, did any other members of the board have any comments they wanted to share at this time? Alright, with the uh, silence prevailing, uh, I'll accept the motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Alright, Mandel, seconded?
Second, Fergieri.
Alright, Nora, please call the roll.
Nora will home.
Approved?
Yeah, we can do it that way. A- any, all in pro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight, and I'll see you at the next meeting.
Have a good night.
Everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.